The joint session of the City Council and the Municipal Code Enforcement Board will come to order as we start this evening. I will quickly throw it to Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sometime ago, thank you, Madam Mayor. Sometime ago, it was requested that we have a joint meeting between City Council and the Municipal Code Enforcement Board for the purposes of giving some consistent information. Mrs. Shone and Mr. Mueller put together an agenda to discuss this evening that deals specifically with liens and lien reduction procedures, foreclosures and the sort. Seeing that Mr. Ross is the one that kind of initiated this meeting, I'll turn it over to him and he can explain the purpose of this meeting.
Well, you kind of did. So, I'll keep it brief so we can get right to the matter. I requested this meeting a couple of months ago and I particularly wanted the members of the Code Board to be here with us so that we could have some dialogue and they could be part of this. Over the years, we've had some difficult lien reduction cases come before the Code Board. Not the garden variety, run-of-the-mill ones where the petitioners, the one who accrued the liens, they then come into compliance and then they ask for reduction. Those, in my opinion, our system works very well and I think the Code Board does an excellent job making sound recommendations to us with those. The ones that get horny, in my opinion, are the ones that involve litigation, those that involve foreclosures, issues of lis pendens, issues of changes of ownership and questions of who owned what, when, and who's responsible for what and when. And those get rather cumbersome sometimes at the Code Board meetings. There's one in particular that we had recently where we had the city for the attorney for the city, the attorney for the Code Board and the attorney for the bank all entering into negotiations here in the midst of a Code Board meeting and it was really kind of an awkward situation for everybody. So, I wanted to explore options to see if there's alternative ways that we can handle just those, just the ones involving legal entanglements, not the regular ones, not the ones that we typically deal with, but the ones that involve the legal entanglements and litigation. So, that's the reason that I asked for the meeting and I'll turn it over to Mr. Shone or Mr. Mueller.
Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to take a look at the extended outline that we sent, that I had sent out to everyone. This is primarily for our information so that everybody has a little bit better understanding about how the law with regard to liens, lis pendens, foreclosures, a little bit better understanding of how that works. Because that forms the basis of what our issues are that we are seeking some guidance from council on today. In a foreclosure action, once a document called a lis pendens is filed, that basically tells everybody and puts everyone on notice that nothing more is essentially supposed to happen with the property from the outside. So, oftentimes, our liens do, the code case may not be finished, but the lien does not get recorded until after the lender has filed a lis pendens. And once that is, if the lis pendens is filed, it pretty much stays things with regard to that property. Our liens, most often cases, are in an inferior position to the mortgage that is being foreclosed on. So, skipping to the end of the whole foreclosure process, our lien is essentially extinguished. We're not entitled to anything. But, with some regularity, not always, but with some regularity, the lender, the bank, will call me, contact somebody with the city and ask that the lien be released. Now, once in 2018, the call came in to me and I discussed this with the bank and then the bank had made an offer to pay something, to move this along, get it released. And, as it turns out, in that particular case, they were dealing with a strange issue that with every property that they dealt with, which was many, our lien was showing up and causing them issues. I consulted with the city manager at that time and I consulted with Mr. Barone to find out what our costs were involved with that particular property. And, I ended up settling that and receiving money from the bank. On a case where our lien is inferior and it's essentially been extinguished due to the foreclosure procedures, we're not really entitled to anything. But, the banks are oftentimes willing to pay something to get the paperwork basically taken care of. We're kind of seeking some, rather than have that, and awkward was exactly the word I was going to use and that Mr. Ross had said, having the board negotiate something that essentially you're not entitled to is very awkward. And, I'm not even sure that the Code Enforcement Board would have the authority under the statute to even do that. So, we're looking for a more simple procedure and we look at foreclosure cases certainly litigation. So, being that it is an issue that is in litigation, we're looking for some approval, I guess, that the city attorney's office, with or without input from the city manager, and we welcome that. I have no opinion on that whatsoever, but other than I'd certainly welcome it and certainly running it by the Code Enforcement Director as well, to be able to negotiate the reduction and the conclusion of that lien. We can give, in the past, I gave a partial release of the lien so that the actual former homeowner who incurred, or who committed the violation, was still basically on the hook. Chances are, we would never collect anything from that individual. Sometimes you can't find the individual. But, there are procedures where you could go after them as someone would go after, as a debt collection. But, I gave a partial release so that the bank can now move on, the property has nothing more encumbering it and it can be freely sold. We feel that we want some of these properties, oftentimes foreclosed properties have not been kept in good condition. There is many times no one living there anymore that you can tell them to get the property into compliance. The banks will not get it into compliance until they become the owner. They can't pull permits if they're not the owner and they often reject doing anything on the property because they say, "We don't own the property yet." So, it's, we feel it's important to get these properties into the hands of a new owner so that now you do have a responsible person and as a new owner, you hope that they're going to come right in and start cleaning it up and fixing it up and repairing and take pride in their new ownership. So, I may be kind of skipping around here a little bit, but that's one of our main issues and what Mr. Ross was talking about. We have properties that lis pendens was filed prior to our lien being recorded. We also have properties in which deals with homestead and a lien legally cannot attach to a homestead property. But, the homestead may be in foreclosure as well, they may want to do a short sale, they want the cloud of our lien to be removed and so, there's an issue there where we would like to quickly deal with those lien reductions and be able to hopefully negotiate something, some conclusion, and get our costs at least paid. I always would try to get more. I want to get as much money as I can for the city, but certainly bottom line is we would want to get our costs paid, that have, you know, monies that have been expended during all of the Code Enforcement procedures. So, those are two of our main issues for this meeting, difficult issues. And, in both, we're essentially not necessarily easily entitled or entitled at all to these monies, but we want to be able to negotiate them in the legal department with consulting with the city manager and not have to put those kind of things in front of the Code Enforcement Board. So, I'll stop there for that particular issue.
Counselman Ross.
Just to, also to kind of put this in context, this is not a new issue. This is something that I had these conversations with Mr. Connolly back when we had Shoemaker Loop. This is not something new. What's changed to kind of bring it to the forefront is the economy. Prior to the economy turning around, most of these properties just sat vacant. There really wasn't a lot of activity. Now that these foreclosures are selling is now that we're seeing a lot more lien reductions come before us. So, this is not something that's really new, but it's kind of been pushed to the forefront because of the economic, which is a good thing, really. So, that's why this has become more of an issue. The other thing is that, I hate to compare us to other jurisdictions because they're all over the place and this issue is too, but most other jurisdictions have a mechanism besides what we have where everything goes before the Code Board. Most jurisdictions have something in place, at least for these kinds of properties. So, if we do this, one of the things that I would be looking for from the city attorney is we would have to memorialize somehow which properties we are talking about and which ones would continue to come before the Code Board.
To further on that is, I located, I think it was 2015 and read the minutes from a city council meeting from 2015 in which this issue did come up. Mr. Connolly was speaking to council and said that he had heard from a bank. He wanted approval to settle this because there were no procedures in place to deal with that particular odd issue and had said at the time at that meeting that we need to have some procedures. I contacted him when I read that and I said, "Did anything ever happen?" And he says, "No, the ball kind of got dropped on that, nothing was ever done." So, this has, was first brought up that I saw on paper in 2015, so.
I would ask if our Code Board members have any input that they would like to share on this issue?
Thank you. David Pogor is the chairman of the Code Board. I think you're down the right road, something has to be done. My only concern, and you've already addressed it, is to have something in place so that we're not, so that there's some kind of criteria to decide what goes here and what goes there. If you can do that, then we wouldn't have any objection to that because it does get cumbersome and we kind of feel like we're reaching beyond our reach in some of these particular cases. So, I think the idea is good. We would just be concerned about setting up a criteria so that we're consistent in what goes the one direction, what goes the other. Thank you.
And I'd also ask if Mr. Barone or Mr. Stevenson would have anything to add or any?
I don't have anything to add, Madam Mayor. I think this is a great meeting. I think this is a good opportunity for all of us to come up with a game plan moving forward. But, something, I know that night when I presented that case to the Code Board, there was an attorney from the bank and I kind of got blindsided and I didn't know what action he was going to take. And then he mentioned about the foreclosure proceeding and then we just kind of, we didn't know what to do, what to move, how to move next. So, this meeting is very good and I think this will help us to move forward.
Thank you. Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thank you, Madam. I think what we need to do is to come up with a decision tree and create the decision tree at administrative level and say, "If it falls into this category, it gets dealt with this way," and then so on down the line so that we keep it out of the realm of the Code Board as much as we can so that they, you know, they don't have the authority to do some of these things. So, I suggest that we come up with a decision tree, leave it with the city attorney to come up with that matrix so that we can approve the matrix and approve who's going to handle which type of case. I don't think, there's probably not that many different types that we couldn't categorize the major ones and anything that gets out of whack or anything out of the ordinary can be brought back to council for possible remediation. And then, we can charge the city manager and the city attorney to work together when necessary to come up with a equitable solution that, given the criteria that we set up for it. But, we would need some guidance from the legal department in order, and I think in order to set up if this, then this type of decision tree.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. And I would just echo that for the purpose of transparency and making sure that citizens felt like their input and certainly those that have dedicated their time and their talents to be part of the Code Board, that they continue to feel very valued for the time that they're investing in this process and procedure, that it would be a very clear delineation of what our office would be doing. And the only area that caused any hiccup or concern for me was this statement with or without agreement of the city manager and code compliance director because I really do believe that ongoing communication and collaboration is critical because Mr. Barone certainly owns that work process and I wouldn't want to see our Code Enforcement Board or our Code Board cut out of any key, and certainly to have a collaborative approach, I think, is critical and again, just to maintain that transparency. Mr. Stevenson, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. I do not. I'd like to guess what is right to work in here. This has been problematic for years and years and years. I think coming up with a matrix of four, it's something to help decide where this thing goes. But, I do agree with you that, you know, if you have a case that goes to the city attorney and city manager to resolve, Code Board needs to know that just for their edification. I think I would solve that issue to the best that I can. I mean, there's always going to be some extenuating case that we'll end up having to bring back to council, I'm sure, but understanding that the majority of these things, whether they go this way, this way, can be handled internally.
And Ms. Shoshawn, do you feel comfortable that you have the information you will need to be able to go forward and put together that decision tree that can come back to council for approval? Are there any point questions, any decision point questions that you need to pose to us this evening?
I don't think so on this one particular issue. I mean, that's the only one we've talked about so far. There's other things on the outline tonight. But, on that, I think I know what you're looking for and we can draft something and you can have that and I'll let, certainly let Mr. Stevenson see that too. So, that is one of the things. I'm going to skip to, I guess, E on the extended outline. And again, most, this was informational, just to let you know that there are various Code Enforcement tools out there. Different cities use different methods. Some use more than one method. Some, my experience in, as an assistant city attorney, started out prosecuting codes. In St. Petersburg, it was done by a notice to appear and everything, every time someone was going to get cited by the code officer, a document was first prepared and brought to the assistant city attorney for review, a sit-down with the code enforcement officer, and I'm not necessarily, I'm not advocating that we switch to that, but at least not for every cases. Probably something similar for more difficult cases that we just can't get compliance on, but more of a hybrid of that. But, I would sit down with the code enforcement officer and the court required that an assistant city attorney sign the document, just like an assistant state attorney must sign an information before somebody can get charged with a crime. And, we would, I would sign the document as long as I was sure that the evidence was all there and I knew I had a decent case. Sometimes, I didn't think they were ready yet and would send them back for further investigation, pictures, something like that. But, the bottom line is, those people, those violators, were brought to county court and they had to face a county court judge with regard to their violation and the county court judge would issue a fine, tell them to get into compliance. And I was going to let Mr. Mueller talk a little bit more about that, not necessarily that method per se, but right now, we've been dealing with one particular person who quite some time passed and finally, with Mr. Barone's hard work and his staff's hard work, they were able to get some compliance. They had gotten compliance from this person in the past, but time went by and the condition reappeared and then they went through it all again. Finally, some compliance. But, this is, but this is an issue where it has to do with a pool. You can drain the pool, but the water comes back into the pool and the pool becomes just as dirty as before, but now it's a partially filled pool. And so, there are, and you've got neighbors complaining about it and so, it's like, what do we do? We cannot get anything, we cannot go any further with this person. So, with something that's difficult like that, it might be best to take a method where you bring this person instead to court and let them face the judge. And if they don't show up, a judge can issue a failure to appear warrant. And, now, when the person, the person can get, if they get stopped for a traffic ticket or a headlight out, usually the police will see on their computer screen, "Hey, a warrant was issued for this person." I am not advocating this for every case, most cases even, just the ones that have gone on for over a year and you cannot get the person in compliance and you have a condition like a dirty pool that may be a safety issue, a health issue, mosquitoes, something like that. We would like to try that with this particular case and see how that goes. And then judiciously use it, no pun intended, judiciously use it for the future on very difficult cases. And again, with Mr. Stevenson's input and Mr. Barone's input and try that because just having the Code Board issue a fine and having the fine just continue to run and run and run, and again, this property's homestead, can't foreclose on a lien on it, but we record a lien anyway, it gets huge and we're never going to see anything. And we sit with a, in this case, a partial problem for who knows how long. So, we would like to try just a little bit stronger enforcement method if council is okay with that. And if there's any questions, I think Mr. Mueller can address that because I know how, you know, he can, I can speak to what St. Pete does, he can speak to what Tampa has done and we have checked with the clerk to find what it's going to cost us to file one of those cases and what we can get out of it. The judge can issue a $500 fine. Whether the judge is going to do that is not necessarily what's going to happen, but, you know, the question here that council needs to decide is, what do we want? What is our, what is our goal, primary goal? Is it punishment or is it compliance? Sometimes you can have both, sometimes you can't. So, what is it that we really want, compliance or punishment?
Counselman Ross, and then we'll go to Mr. Mueller.
Yes, I, my only comment on that is that I don't know that the council needs to wade into this. We don't typically tell Code Enforcement how to enforce the code, we just expect that they will. We don't tell the police chief how to enforce the law, we just assume that the police chief is going to use the appropriate legal means. Sometimes that's a notice to appear, sometimes that's a custodial arrest, sometimes it's a citation. We don't, I don't know that, maybe I'm misreading the ordinance, but I don't know that we need to tell the administration how to enforce the code. I think if you guys, when, years ago, when they adopted and tried a civil citation program and they got away from that for a variety of reasons, but we didn't have to approve that, that was something that the administration made a decision that that's a legal option that they were going to try. And, it seems like this is a legal option for you guys to collectively, the city manager, attorney, and if you guys want to do this, I don't know that we need to, I don't know that we need to approve it or disapprove it, really. I don't know. Doesn't seem to me like we do. Seems to me like akin to the police chief coming before us and saying, "We want to try this new diversion program" and us making the decision. We don't do that normally.
The reason we have this here and I'm bringing it up is, I didn't want it to look as though we were taking something away from Code Enforcement Board, taking one of their, whether their cases or their duties at all, taking anything away from Code Enforcement Board. So, that's why I wanted to bring it up here at the workshop so that any, the parties in interest here can give their opinions.
Mr. Mueller, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, I think, well, first of all, good evening, Mayor and members of council. In light of council member Ross's statements or comments, I, you know, probably don't have much to follow up with regard to the different Code Enforcement tools. But, we did send an outline out. It was pretty long, it was about three pages long, three to four pages long. If there needs to be any clarification or explanation on any of that, I'm more than happy to, you know, walk people through it.
Thank you. Councilman Schisler.
Thank you. Two things. Number one, I'd like to hear comments from the city manager, speaking for his staff as to what his thoughts are on the subject. And two, regards to the police chief coming and saying that, "Well, I want to try a new diversion kind of speech for itself," but wouldn't that be set up by an ordinance or a law or something that says, "You violate this, you can do such and such." I don't know that we have an ordinance in place that would allow us to do that type of a citation. We have to, it is a state law. Okay. Mr. Stevenson, what's your thoughts?
We'll go to, if we could first go to Councilwoman Donahue, then we'll go to Mr. Stevenson, then we'll go to Councilman Chambers.
I just wanted to ask, and maybe I'm being premature, maybe you're going to answer this. I want to know if our code officers feel that this would be something they would be comfortable doing or would you, do you feel that you would always say to the city attorney, "This is my case, we are prepared to offer a citation"? You know, to get, before you, I'm sure this isn't something, this is obviously somebody you are familiar with this case.
Yes, yeah. I've had many dialogues with Mr. Bernstein and if we go to a citation program with this respondent, I would recommend that an officer would escort me to that property to issue a citation to this individual. He has over $200,000 in liens. Even if we give him a citation or a notice of repeat violation, which has been three times already, once he drains the pool, technically the pool's in compliance. So, even if you give him a citation, he, once he drains it, he's in compliance. So, that's the game that he plays with us. He lets it fill up and then, of course, the neighbor behind calls me or sends a picture and says, "The pool's out of compliance again." So, we start the whole process over again. It's a notice of repeat violation, like I said, the next time will be number four. He's got $200,000 in liens, but periodically, he does drain the pool. So, as far as the citation, I would ask the police to escort me to the property.
Obviously, these are extreme cases you're talking about.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stevenson, and then we'll go to Mr. Pogor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be real honest with this board, I am not comfortable sending my staff to knock on somebody's door to give them a citation. It is troublesome enough to send code to the door to address a code issue, much less ask them to get an ID from somebody and get a responsible party at a front door and issue a citation. It's been tried before under my supervision. It's, it's been tried before under my supervision down in Key West and it was a nightmare. Okay? We dropped it within a couple of months. I did have a couple of overzealous code officers that got a little out of control, but the whole process is rather cumbersome and certainly it is a tool that is available to us at a last resort. And I don't mind pursuing that as a last resort, as a matter of protocol, just because we've got a difficult resident or business owner out there. You know, just to remind you, we ended up taking Mr. Urbanczek, I think everybody in this room knows that piece of property that I'm talking about. We ended up taking him to court as well and look at how many years we spent with him. Same thing with Mr. Holland, you know, we, we ended up in court without the issuance of a citation and certainly I think that is, again, another tool that we can use through the issuance of a lawsuit. So rather than put our code enforcement officers in an awkward position, Mr. Barone and I have talked about this, I don't know that I'm comfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Pagor.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and City Council. David Pagor, it's the Code Enforcement Chair. I wanted to first echo some of the things that the city manager said, that the citation program is kind of puts our code enforcement officers in danger that they didn't sign up for, quite frankly. But I thought we were talking more about taking people to county court. And I'm okay with that. I mean, I think in the past, when I was chair before, this, the board actually issued subpoenas, which worked sometimes, sometimes didn't. And I think that we need to keep in mind that the citation thing is really not what you guys were talking about before. You were talking about taking people to county court. And I think that's an option. But as Ms. Shoshon said, you know, what are we trying to do? We're trying to get, are we trying to get, make money or are we trying to get compliance? I think we've always been in the compliance business, not the revenue business. And then, you know, now we're kind of probably losing money if we go to court and as Charles said, sometimes it takes years. So as, as the chair of the code enforcement board, I would very much be okay with, you know, on certain cases, on a case by case basis that after we talk to the, our code board and the code, and city manager and attorney about taking somebody to court, I think that's a possibility. I am very much against the civil citation process because it just, it puts our, our code enforcement officers into, into danger that they didn't sign up for and we shouldn't be putting them in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagor. Ms. Shoshon, and then we'll go to Councilman Ross.
I think that we're talking about two different things here. I am not talking about doing any civil citations. That's a different method. The method that I'm talking about is not initiated with a civil citation. In my experience, these are like 15-minute mini-trials. The judge decides it right then and there, just like code enforcement board does. The only difference is a lot of people seem to not show up for code enforcement board. Where are these defendants? When you're sitting, when the, when the court issues you a subpoena and you're told you better appear in front of the judge, most people show up. And as I said, when they don't, a failure to appear warrant is issued and they realize we really mean business. So the majority of code cases that our board hears, there's no defendant standing there. And fines get issued and half of them come around later and say, I didn't even know that this happened. We send them notices, but they somehow seem to never notice this. So it's a, it's a completely different procedure. So Mr. Barone doesn't need to worry about having to issue citations. That is not what we're talking about. In the cases, in the method I'm talking about, Mr. Barone or his staff would appear as a witness. They get up and they tell the judge what they observed, what they had done, what the conversation was with the defendant, if they had any. And the city attorney or assistant city attorney prosecutes the case, just like an assistant state attorney would. The trials usually last about 15 minutes because the judge has a whole bunch of them on his calendar that day and justice is swift. And we, we're hoping that with these very difficult ones only, that when, when the person is faced with a judge, they will come into compliance. Oftentimes the judge will say, I'm with, I'm going to withhold ruling on your sentence. You get into compliance, I'm going to put this on my calendar for 30 days. And if you're in compliance in 30 days, you know, or we can even say to them, if you get in compliance, we will tell the judge to go lenient with you. Otherwise, we're going to seek, in this particular case, because it's a repeat, we're going to seek the maximum, a $500 fine. I think it could even possibly go up higher. So, you know, again, it's only four very difficult cases. We may not see one for years, but we have one right now that may be ripe for that. If only it sometimes gives the neighbor his day in court. When you, and I went through that many times. I'd have a neighbor coming to my office constantly complaining about something that was being done. I even, the police even helped with a sting operation in St. Pete once and sure enough, the neighbor was doing what this poor guy kept complaining about all this time. He got down on his knees in court after, after the, the neighbor did, after the hearing and thanked me for finally helping him. But it gives the neighbor a chance to come in, get his day in court too. He can get up there as a witness. And when the judge says, no, I'm not finding him guilty, the neighbor can blame the judge and not be complaining to all of us anymore. We've done everything we can at that point. But we would like to just try this for the very difficult issues.
Councilman Ross, and then we'll go to Councilman Chambers and Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as has been pointed out, we kind of digressed. We were talking about a notice to appear and then we digressed into talking about civil citations, which is an entirely different thing. So the notice to appear, if judiciously used, would only be used very seldom. I mean, we don't have this many egregious cases. It would be used very seldom. And a police officer could accompany the code enforcement officer to the property. It's not, nobody's asking code compliance officer to go out there and put themselves in harm's way and give the person a notice to appear. And this might happen once a year, might happen once every couple of years. This is not something that we would use on, you know, people who have high grass. But there's a big difference here because as, as the code board well knows, all we have legal authority to do is assess a daily fine. Well, once that lien accrues to a certain point, it's not a motivator anymore. This guy's got a $200,000 lien. It exceeds the value of the property. It's no longer motivating. He'll do this all day long. He's given up on this property a long time ago. But our liens attach to the property. A judge's order attaches to the person. This is a whole different ball of wax. When you put somebody before a judge and they say, you have a fine, right? That doesn't just attach to your property that someday after your death, your estate's going to lose the house. That attaches to you and if you defy the judge, you have a problem, right? So if it were me, I would be in favor of this. But I go back to what I said at the beginning. If the city manager, the city administration deems that this is not the way they want to do it, although I disagree, I don't think the council ought to tell the city manager that this is what we have to do. I think this is up to the administration to decide, do we want to use this tool or not? If it were me, I'd say, heck yeah, I want to use the tool. I wish we'd have done this five years ago. Because there are some people that come before the board, come before the board, come before the board, come before the board. Guess what? Next stop is going down before a judge. And I would love to get tough with some of these people and this is the way to do it. But I don't think the council ought to order the administration to do this. I think this is something that the administration needs to hash out, decide whether they want to do this or not.
Councilman Chambers.
A question. Can this procedure be used now without our input? I mean, now can the code board request that a case go before the county court?
Yes, it is one of the options for enforcement. Again, rather than jump into it and just do it, I didn't want to look like we were usurping anybody's authority or power and I wanted to present it in an open meeting so that, you know, so that the code enforcement board does not think that, that they're going to be losing their work. I know how they love this, so I don't want them to be losing any of their cases. But Mr. Barone mentioned, and I don't know if it was this case or another case, but he mentioned to me just yesterday, a particular home where there had been 111 trips to the property over, over a period of time. This person need, whoever that was, they need to be taken to court and they should have been taken to court probably 100 trips ago. So, you know, it's, it's cases like those, not your everyday case.
But the case would be, it would be asked by the code board to go that route? No? So our staff could initiate the court, the county court proceedings without the wishes of the code board?
I, I'm foreseeing this as that Mr. Barone would say to me at some point, to the city manager at some point, we've got a property, it's become a problem. We can't get into, them into compliance. This has gone on too long. We've already maybe got a lien that's more than the value of the house and it still sits there out of compliance.
Okay, could we put a step in there? I'm just asking for me, could we put a step in there that if Mr. Barone wants that, then he goes to the code board and they approve that, then it goes to somebody else? And that way, the code board still has authority on that?
We would do that.
Okay, so we, we have it now then. Are you, so you're asking to bypass the code board?
I never.
It's not bypass, that's not a good word. But go directly, staff directly to the court without input from the code board?
I, I've never seen, and I've never seen any instance where anyone has asked the code board, is it okay for us to take this one to court? I, I just don't think that, I, it's so that they don't have to do this or it's really not so they don't have to, it's because it's already failed there. And administration can see that we're not getting anywhere with this particular violator. So it's, it's taking another step and now taking the person to court.
Councilman Schisler, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Donahue.
I'm a little confused now at this point, but we've gone a full circle. I do understand that it's, it's already available to us now, right? The option, okay? And the fail safes or the checks for it are that the code enforcement board has to look at it? Or they don't have to look at it at this point? Okay, but it's got to go.
Maybe, Mr. Mueller can.
What's the steps that has to happen for this then?
Okay, yeah, it does not have to go through the code enforcement board. More than likely, it's going to be a case that has gone through the code enforcement board and the lien process is not working. It's not motivating compliance. The reason I would be apprehensive to say, let's go, have it go through the code board is remember, they only meet once a month and that can delay the process. We'd like to be able, if we, if we decide, if Mr. Barone, someone else decides, hey, we want to go this process, we want to start moving forward with it and would, you know, not have to want to wait a month or whatever to approach the board. And I think that would just slow the process down. So it'd be my recommendation that, you know, if we, we can use this, it's already available in Florida statutes. If we use it, we just would move forward and, and file with the, with the court if it meets the criteria of being egregious. We need it to be egregious because we're going to the court. Judge is going to want to know, why am I here on a code violation? We got to let him know that we had, you know, it's been through the code enforcement board or we've got neighbors complaining or it's reached this level. So that's why it's always going to be egregious because the court is going to want it to be at that level to hear it. You know, to, you know, to say, yeah, this is worth my time. Because they're very busy, they got a lot going on.
Okay, so this option is already in place for us?
Yes.
The only, the only thing that we're trying to do here is to try and force the administration to use it on a regular basis?
No, I think what it is, is this was a matter of, one of the items on your, on the outline was the idea if we got code enforcement liens that are, been accruing for more than a year, what do we do? Well, we have these different options, these different tools that are available outside, you know, in addition to code enforcement board. It was just more of an informational.
Okay, then I would, I would rely upon the city manager and him enforcing that issue as he sees fit and moving forward with and leaving it in his, in his desk.
Councilwoman Donahue.
Well, my question is, if it's already in your tool belt, why can't you say to someone that you, they've already come to the board, to the code board, they're, obviously this is something that you can't, you haven't thrown enough at them, that you can't say, well, you've got 30 days, we're taking it back to the code board and to request a civil citation?
One thing we got to do is we ban you about civil citation. We got to be careful, that's very specific. This would be a notice to appear.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And the word citation gets used a lot, even with the code enforcement board, sometimes it's like, hey, I'm giving you a citation. We have the three tools, the code enforcement board, the civil citation process, which I think everybody agrees is probably not one we want to use. And then what we call the notice to appear, which actually goes to criminal court. The other advantage to that is code enforcement board meets at night. This is during the day. So people, if they get subpoenaed there, they're going to have to take off time from work, go there. I don't know if anybody's been down to the court and seen the line you got to go through for the, for the metal detector. You're there for a while. So it, even though the fine might only be $500 maximum, it's not a fun time. It's not a good place you want to be. It takes up a lot of your time. It's very, you know, it can be a real hassle. Sometimes just the fact you got to go to court and be in front of a judge is the bigger punishment.
So, so my, my point is, no, thank you, you're right. So is this something that, because these are not, these people are not strangers to each other? The code officer, the homeowner, they're like, see you coming, they know, okay, they've been here before, these are, you know, the usual suspect kind of, is there not a way for us to say, look, the only thing I have left in my tool belt is this notice to appear and this is what will happen if we go there. So I'm giving you 30 days to get your act cleaned up or I'm going to have to go to our city attorney and start the process. I mean, we are all in agreement here that we're into compliance. We're not trying to, like you say, it's $500 and it's not even coming to us, right? So it's not like this is for money. Well, but I mean, it's still, if somebody owes us $200,000 and we say, we're going to give you another $500 fine, they're probably like, well, go ahead. I mean, is that not something that we can do? I guess it's not something we would do if we know that the city manager is adamantly opposed to that. But is there a happy medium we can have here where we're like, we've reached, we've reached our maximum. If you don't get into compliance, and then of course, the next thing would be, at what point do we consider that this guy's been going obviously longer for that, for a year? So if you have somebody, if you get to a year, maybe that's when you're like, okay, that, that kicks us into the next piece. I would have no objection to the notice to appear. I'm in agreement that the civil citation is too far down the road. But I mean, it just seems like they know you have nowhere else to, nowhere else to go, especially when they get beyond what their property is worth.
And I think too, the other reason we kind of brought it up to is it does have a bit of a cost to it. Remember, there's, you're going to have to have a $10 filing fee. There is a $40 non prevailing party fee, which we would anticipate would be assessed on our violator. And, and then the clerks, the clerk of the court or the court itself does take a percentage of that fine too, as part of their costs. It's about 10% from what I've been able to gather. So just so you know, there is, you know, that, there is some cost to it that's a little bit more than what going to the code enforcement board would be.
Councilman Schiller.
Thank you, Madam. So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth and I just want to get an understanding. Currently the city has the, does the city have the option to take this to a judicial hearing? Does the city currently have that option?
Legally, yes, we do.
Okay. Here's all I caution everybody on. I sat on the code board for five and a half years for serving as counsel. The goal is to bring a property in compliance. And I agree with what, once in a while you have a person that thinks they're smarter than everybody else. I feel very strong that any authorization should not be up to one person or one department. That's giving too much power to any individual or any person. As we've done in the past, if there is a problem and there's extreme frustration where it cannot move forward, the code board feels that problem first. Because we keep.
Because we keep telling you, comply, comply, comply. This person doesn't show up, they don't comply, nothing happens. When I sat on the board, what we would do, we would have quarterly reviews, annual reviews, and if there are properties that were way out of hand, the code board, not the attorney, not the city manager, the code board would say, okay, we want to foreclose on this property and this property. And that's what would happen. Code board is our citizens, made up of many different people and many different backgrounds. I don't, I will not support any one person or one department saying, yep, code board's done their part, they're frustrated, we're just going to take it here. Now, let's let the code board tell us that. One department should not be doing that. If we have the tool in place, I think Mr. Chambers asked the question, can we go to this process now? We're bypassing the code board. No, we're not. Yes, we are. Why not keep it? If we have it in place now, I'm all for it. Somebody don't listen, they want to follow the rules? Take them there, but go through the code board. What, it's an extra month? It's been six months or a year at this point. Who, you know, we want to fix it, absolutely, 100%. But I want to make sure that the folks that are on the code board clearly say with full transparency that we've exhausted all options, take it to the next level, city attorney's office, or city manager, whoever it may be. That's how we've done in the past. And Mr. Pagoralek served on the board. Somebody was, was, a lot of liens, move it to foreclosure. If it's not homesteaded, obviously, we'd work from that direction. But there's a system and a process in place, and some people, sometimes they get a little difficult. I don't know that we've ever, at least during my tenure, gone through this judicial process, but maybe it's something we definitely need to exercise. But I think, my opinion is, it needs to go through the code board, like we do with the foreclosure and everything else. These are people that we have appointed, that have served as public, and I think it's vetted. They have had hearings. When they get to a breaking point saying, these people are not cooperating, we need to go to the next step, you know, city attorney, please begin that process. And I think that that would continue that transition, but have clear understanding that if you don't comply here, you're going to comply when you get up here. But it's got to go through the code board. I do, I'm not comfortable bypassing the code board. And call it what you want to call it, but it's bypassing the code board if we don't have to get the code board's approval, unanimous approval, to take it to that level. I mean, this keeps the code board in touch and connection with what's going on, on the cases that they have brought to a certain level. And if they feel comfortable, then everybody's in support of it. Say you take it there, the other cross-examination attorney starts having, they bring our attorney along, they have a cross-hearing, and there's two court members, two board members that didn't agree with it. Then you have another problem, but it's going through the steps. And I don't want to hear that it takes an extra month. That's not a good answer. Because normally, when a case gets to this point, it's gone months, if not years. That's not something that, you know, sits comfortable. I agree. Take it to them if they're abusing our system, but take it through the process of the code board, through the city attorney's office, with the city manager involved, as we've always done, just like we do foreclosures. That's the same way we do foreclosures. I would strongly suggest that we follow that system and bring compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schiller. We are running short on time. We have three more individuals who wanted to speak to this, so if we could just be mindful of time. Councilman Ross.
I'll be brief. First of all, I want to reiterate something I've said three times already. I don't think this is our decision. I think it's Mr. Stevenson's decision, regardless of what we think. We don't tell the police chief how to enforce the law, and we don't tell Tom Barone's staff how to enforce the code. That's not our function. So, but I would say, it's completely inappropriate. We're overthinking this thing. We're way overthinking this thing. It's, we're beating this thing to death. It's very simple. Police give notices to appear every day. We're just beating this thing to death. This is building a horse with a committee, right? The other thing is, you cannot take this to the code board to get permission to prosecute a case in county court. That makes the code board part of the prosecution. The code board is the judge. The code board acts as a quasi-judicial board. They hear the case. They hear the facts and evidence. You can't make them part of the prosecution. You can't make them come before, I'm not even sure that's legal, to come before the code board, to ask for permission to give somebody, it's like the police chief coming to the council and say, hey, I want to arrest this robber down the road, I've got probable cause, is it okay with you if I go get a warrant? We just, this is, we're putting, we're mixing up roles. The code board's not part of the prosecution. The code board's part of the judicial end of it.
A code enforcement board does not have the authority to decide who to prosecute. Mr. Barone and the city manager can decide to prosecute somebody, but the code board, they are there as, a magistrate is there as a judge, a code board is there as a jury. The jury does not decide who to prosecute. The state attorney decides who to prosecute. And in our particular case, our, or our code actually says that the city attorney is supposed to be the prosecutor for this city. So, in essence, our code is giving me the power, but I would, I could never decide which cases. I would have to hear from Mr. Barone first. He would have to bring it to me, and he reports to the city manager. So, there's at least three people who would be in the process. No one person would make the decision, so.
Councilman Schiller.
So, somebody explain the law to me, then. What is the difference between a court proceeding for asking the city to move a case forward for code violations versus the code enforcement board currently can tell the city attorney, foreclose that property?
That's after adjudication.
I'm sorry, sir, I have the floor. Thank you very much. I'm asking the city attorney, not you. You're not an attorney. So, the question is, we can authorize you, the board, to do foreclosures? That's a court proceeding? And the evidence speaks for itself, because it's now in foreclosure, because we've assessed all these fines. Code board says, these are 15 cases, go and foreclose on these two. They're telling you to move forward. So, why can they not instruct you to move forward in a court proceeding, because this case has gotten to a point where there's no compliance? What's the difference?
The Florida statute that authorizes and created the opportunity to have code enforcement boards is very strict on what authority a code enforcement board has. They should not and cannot overstep their authority. A foreclosure case is a civil, is a civil matter. A prosecution, this is like quasi-criminal. It is in civil court, but it's under the rules of criminal procedure. A foreclosure action is just starting a lawsuit. It isn't prosecuting somebody. So, that's the difference.
Okay. So, if there's actually a statute that states that, I certainly would like to see that from when you bring any information, as counsel chooses to be brought forward, that distinguishes between the two, because they're both going before a court for hearings for foreclosure or for further action. And the code board's not getting into the meat of things. They're saying, we've reached this level, go foreclose, we've reached this level, take it to the next, do what you got to do.
And a foreclosure, and when they're, when they're suggesting cases to be foreclosed on, that's a case they've already decided. So, they've already made their decision, they've already issued fines in that case, there's already been a lien. It's one they've already done. This is now starting a new proceeding against somebody. So, it's, it's, it's not the same, it's just not the same.
Mr. Shoshon, you say it's already done, but the reason that the violation, some foreclosure cases are continued to accrue because it's not in compliance. So, it's not already done. The clock, the fee is still ticking. It's not coming in compliance. It's getting higher and higher. So, at some point, you say, some people comply, and they have those fines. Sometimes they don't.
In foreclosing, you're dealing with a judgment. Essentially, there's already been a fine imposed. You're just trying to collect the money now by foreclosing. In the other instance, you are now initiating a prosecution anew. So, they're just not the same at all. But I will be happy to provide you and highlight the statute that gives the powers, the certain powers to a code enforcement board.
Being sensitive to time, we have gone over on the workshop. I believe council and our code board has requested both the decision tree matrix, a copy of the Florida statute. And again, as our team comes back, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Barone, Ms. Shoshon, Mr. Mueller, to present, and it looks like at this point, a follow-up meeting will be in order. Want to thank the code board for being in attendance this evening and for your participation. And if there are any items that have not been addressed that might still be heartburn issues for those who are members of the code board, please, if you'll connect either through Tom, or through our clerk, or through Mr. Stevenson, to make sure that all of the items are addressed. So, as we go forward, we are ensuring that our code board is absolutely in the loop and respected, and that certainly citizen participation is maintained. And want to thank everyone.
Very informative. Thank you for the workshop.
And with this, we will, we will close the workshop and give.